It strikes me. Do we have?
We do.
Maybe we should hold it for that.
Okay.
And then could you give a... Just to tell them, I guess, what's on the agenda.
I didn't bring the agenda with me. Have you got it with you?
I know. You posted it.
Right.
I can pull it off.
Okay. All right. I'll let you do it.
So we'll talk about the GSA during other committees, I guess.
Okay. Do we have...
He's in the bathroom.
Mike, would you do the prayer?
Sure.
Yeah, she should have. I had an answer for her.
Well, we are... All right, we're going to call the meeting back to order. Councilman Thomas will be here very shortly. Mike, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
The prayer and the pledge.
In the...
Both.
Okay. Thank you.
All to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I ask Councilman Mauer if he would lead us in the invocation, too.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for the opportunity we have of meeting together as a city, and we're thankful for the blessings that Thou has provided us. And we pray that Thou will provide us with wisdom as we make the decisions tonight that we might have Thy wisdom fall upon us. And we're thankful for all the blessings that this city receives from Thee. And we say these things in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. We are going to do... Pardon me? Oh, can you hear me now?
Flip your switch again, maybe. Sometimes you have to play with it.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Gary's coming out.
Testing.
Hello, hello, I hear it. Thank you, thank you. Okay, we are going to do the close... The City Attorney, the closed session report.
Sure. First, a quick closed session report. We've got... City Council met in closed session to discuss two litigation items. One is with the County of Kern, the other is regarding Christopher Calvi. In both cases, the City Council received a report from... In both cases, the City Council received a report from the City Attorney. How's that? And in neither cases are reportable action. In fact, the Kern County matter had to be adjourned, and we will go back into closed session after the public portion of the meeting, and then have another report out of closed session then, if you'd like to stick around. The City Council also met in closed session to discuss public employment of the city manager. And the City Council, as a result of that discussion, directed staff to negotiate and bring back a contract for a recruiter with an entity called The Mathis Group, and that will be brought back and approved in public at a subsequent meeting. In addition to the closed session report, Madam Mayor, I just want to talk briefly. There was a change in law recently that we've notified staff of concerning notification for certain matters regarding public works contracts, and I just want to let you know that we're aware... That became effective recently. We've notified staff of those changes, and we're going to make changes in our standard form public works contract, but I just wanted to let you know that we were aware of that. Madam Mayor and ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, that concludes the report.
Thank you, sir. All right, the next item is presentations. Do we have anyone here with the Americans with Disabilities Act representing them? Then let's all go up to the front, and we'll make the presentation. Gary, can you turn up that one? Gary? Go ahead and start talking.
He's coming out now. He's going to look at something. Go ahead.
Hello. Is that better?
It's a little bit better. He's got to turn you up now.
I have to apologize. I turned that mic off. I didn't know what that button went to. I thought it went to this light. A proclamation of the City of Richcrest, California, anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. Now, I'm too close now. Whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, was passed July 26, 1990, to ensure the civil rights of citizens with disabilities, and whereas Richcrest, California affirms the principles of equality and inclusion for persons with disabilities as set forth for the State of California and as embodied in the ADA, the laws of the State of California, ordinances of Richcrest, California, and the State of California's Department of Developmental Services, and whereas numerous organizations in Richcrest and the State of California work with constituents and communities to bring forth the promise of hope and freedom that is envisioned by the passage of the ADA, and whereas July 26, 2017 celebrates the 27th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act with desert area resources and training, now therefore be it proclaimed, the Richcrest City Council does hereby extend greetings and best wishes to all observing July 26, 2017, as Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness Day proclaimed this 19th day of July, 2017, signed by the whole City Council. Jenny, I'd like to present that to you.
Thank you. Yes, I would. So, thank you to the Council and the City of Richcrest. I know that many of you know some things about DART, but when we talk about accessibility and the celebration of the ADA Act, we also have to take into consideration other elements of accessibility. We talk about the people, the personnel, and the other stakeholders that we serve that this is concern of. A lot of people only know that there are ADA regulations that relate to architecture. We also have to address environment, attitudes about persons with special needs, finances, employment, communication, technology, transportation, community integration, and any other barrier that's identified by the person or personnel or stakeholders. Many of you may have grown up at the same time that I did, where persons with special needs were thought of as someone to care for, be kind to, have respect for. Then we went through a period of time where the youth of our communities did not have this respect, and the attitudes about persons with disabilities became something where those people were not entitled to their rights. And many things about the Accessibility Act address these things. We still deal with the same things as many other people do within our organization, such as harassment, bullying, and attitudes of negative feelings whenever someone with a special need is addressed or works with them. So, we meet these challenges every day. We, again, thank the community for recognizing the ADA anniversary. We will be addressing things in the future in all of the areas that I talked about, but it is a pleasure to continue to serve those persons, their families, and the rest of the community. So, thank you.
Thank you all.
Sure, wait, wait, wait.
That's fine. I got it right in here. All I did was move it. Wow. Good, good job. Okay, public comment. Persons wishing to address the Council on matters that are within the Council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council will not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. Public comment, please.
Good evening. My name is Stan Rettora. My point tonight is going to be very short. I believe I may have mentioned this one time before. During the budget discussions, it turns out that there were $300,000 of major fee funds that were not obligated. The reason for that, I was told, is that the staff couldn't come up with a $300,000 project to do on roads. My feeling is that it ought to be possible with our road situation to come up with a road project that would actually use and obligate those $300,000. So, I'm requesting the staff... Pardon me, I'm requesting the Council to advise the staff, put together a $300,000 road project so that we can actually use the Measure V funds for what they were intended. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Any other... Thank you.
Dave Matthews' address is on file with the city clerk. No disrespect to my friend Jeanne DeAngelis there and all the work that she does, but I have to take this moment to just point out a few things that probably we are aware of, maybe we're not, about the ADA. And by the way, I know a little bit about people with special needs. My wife had MS for 30 some odd years. Gradually progressed. We went through several wheelchairs, other items to help her get around. And I also had a grandmother, came straight over from Germany. She had a club foot. I don't know if you know what that is, but look it up. I'm not going to tell you right now. And I also had an uncle who was very disabled, but he was a very good man, too, you know, in his heart. But the ADA had some drawbacks, which I think we need to be aware of, and maybe if we can in the future try to get some of these amended. And that is, for example, we got the ADA to close down Penny Pool for the results of actions with the ADA. We have all kinds of requirements, but there's no means of mention of how some of those requirements are supposed to be financed. And we've run into this many times around town. So, keep those two things in mind at least when you're celebrating that. Now, the day after, the 27th, I have marked on my calendar, but I bet a lot of other people don't. Anybody want to render a guess as to why I have it marked on my calendar? It's supposedly the end of the Korean War. I call it conflict. So do a lot of other people. But that date came about because we, the United States, allowed the UN, the United Nations, to step in and intervene. Well, it's been 70 some years now, and look what's going on over there. If we had have been allowed and had the guts to go on in and finish what we had started, or what they had started and what we were going to finish, we might not have that situation today. And that's another example of why, when I was in high school, we had a debate team, and the United Nations was just being formed. We had a debate team as to whether or not certain countries, like Russia, should be allowed on the Security Council, and the overwhelming conclusion was that no. Yet, they got in, and the United Nations is, in my mind and a lot of the people's mind, a pathetic organization in this day and age. Thank you.
I would just like to remind that we are public commentators for items over which we have jurisdiction. I do not disregard what you say, Dave, but we don't have much jurisdiction over the United Nations. And I'm not trying to be facetious, but I don't think they're going to listen to us. But thank you for your comments. Sir.
This is Mike Neal. Madam Mayor, I suggest you consult with your City Attorney, who has in the past stated that free speech cannot be advocated for public comment. So, I suppose maybe once in a while we could talk about things that you don't think you can actually take direct action on. He's acting like he doesn't know what he was talking to, what he said that night, but I heard it clearly, so, you know, there we are. Anyway, that's my comment. I don't wish responses here. I have my five minutes going. So, what I'd like to comment on is actions by the city been taken in the past, which recently culminated in the Dale Howard family now definitively, and in fact, being thrown out of their house. Despite of the fact that when the city had to try to get a case against them in an actual proper jury trial, they couldn't win. Howard, Mr. Howard, is pronounced not guilty on that, but of course, don't pay hundreds of thousands of dollars to lawyers who have great sway with the court, file civil action jointly at the same time, and get them into a place where they can't have a jury trial, and guess what you get? Just what money will buy for you? Lack of justice, lack of fairness, lack of proper, any regard to constitutional rights, in my opinion whatsoever. So, now this town gets to share this legacy jointly for till the end of time with the well-known fact that because somebody didn't toe the line, wished to actually stand up to the city, they were willing to use hundreds of thousands of dollars of our tax money to persecute them and eventually throw them out of their home in the middle of summer. I hope that we're all very proud of that. I'm certainly not. Another subject which has to do with basically constitutional rights, which we had a discussion at the City Org meeting, was about the teenage curfew law. It's been in effect in Richcrest for some time. Basically, the committee's response was, well, if the police say we need it, then we need it, and we won't ask for it to be looked at again. So, I'm going to bring a few pertinent facts towards the entire Council on this, and I hope you'll listen and consider it.
Mike, we do have this on the agenda when we do a report from the City Org Committee.
And now I'm going to talk about the fact that it still needs to be listened to some more by the full Council.
Well, if you... How do we do that, sir? Mr. Lemieux, how do we address this? I want to be fair, but I also don't want to discuss it three times in one evening.
You're going to stop my time while you do this? Thank you.
The Org Committee made a decision.
Right.
Made a recommendation, approved it, and I'm going to report on that tonight.
And he wants to comment on it now?
Yes, sir.
That's what I'm doing.
He's not going to be able to report after your comments, and we're not taking action on it tonight. So, the only time to report on... The only time for him to comment on it would be now.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Neal.
Thank you very much. Okay, what I'm going to do now is read you a few brief excerpts from a publication on the subject from the National Youth Rights Association, which I did provide to the committee. Sadly, it didn't sound like they really listened, read it, and thought about it very much. But anyway, here's just a few things out of there for the whole Council to consider on this. Number one, the creation of a... Microphone seems to be cut off here. Hello? Okay. Try harder. "The creation of a substantially broad crime to allow the ability to stop and question all individuals under a certain age is a tool for police and a way to get around individual rights." How about the... Just having a nighttime curfew, period? And the fact that, well, the statement's been made that we have all of this potential crime being committed between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m.? Well, apparently, the FBI doesn't necessarily agree with that. They have a study out that says youth between the ages of 12 and 17 are most at risk of committing violent acts and being victims between 2:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. That doesn't seem to be between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. Okay. Another fact here about talking about, well, we have curfew laws where we have lots of crime we've got to worry about, and this was the original treatise when they first instituted the curfew law, was we have solved a serious, serious gang problem, okay? Is that two minutes or what? This display still needs to be fixed so you can tell how much time we've actually So, anyway, there's a small percentage of crime committed by youth. Seventy-five to 90% of all crimes are committed by adults, so now we've enacted this violation of people's inherent rights in order to curb crime during part of the day for, you know, maybe 20% of the population. The best statement, and I probably could...
I will give you a couple more minutes, because I...
Okay.
A minute and a half, so it was about 90 seconds Keith told.
I'll do it. Their statement on the basic premise of this is this. "In a free country, it's not our place to decide what is appropriate for our neighbor to do or not do. Freedom doesn't require proof to justify one's decisions. If a teen wants to take a stroll and gaze at the moon, that's her decision. If a teen feels it's too hot during the day, which I brought up, and prefers jogging at night or early in the morning, that's his decision. If a teen wants to go to the park and count blades of grass at 3:00 a.m. in the morning, from what harm do we suffer? Freedom is not the result of exceptions to the law. The laws are the exceptions to freedom." And that's the whole point here. And now you think about this a little bit. So, if we want to use curfew laws to curb crime, but for some reason we think the juveniles are some terrible exception, and we need for them to be essentially under house arrest from 10:00 p.m. at night to 6:00 a.m. in the morning, why don't we just face, you know, be realistic and say, you know what? We obviously think this is a good tool to curb crime. Why don't we just enact a citywide curfew for all residents from 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. in the morning? And then, that really ought to cut crime down, shouldn't it? And if you're out on the street, you're an obvious criminal, and you need to be taken in, while we might be able to reduce our police force.
Please finish up.
I am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment? Okay, council announcements. Let's start down this way, Lindsey. Sir? No council announcements. I did have one. Rick, I had given you a piece of paper from the... That I was hoping you would pass back out, that talked about the meeting on the end of this month for the Golden... For the... Have you got it? Did you?
I took it upstairs. You didn't tell me what it's for. You just handed it to me.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I can send someone up to get it.
I will get it back to you. There's announcement for the older folks that are having a special meeting in California City, and I wanted us to know about it, and I asked her to make copies so you all would have it, but I didn't keep one, so my apologies. I'll put it on under my comments. Okay, the next item is a consent calendar. "All items in the consent calendar are considered to be routine by city staff and all approved in one motion if no member of the council or the public wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is required by anyone, it may be reviewed from the... May be removed from the consent calendar and be considered separately with public comment before action is taken. Do any members of the council wish to have any of these items removed?"
Four and eight.
I was going to read them.
Oh.
Okay. All right. We usually do read them all, so everybody who doesn't have an agenda sees it. "Proposed action to approve draft minutes of the City of Richcrest City Council Successor Redevelopment Agency Financing Authority Housing Authority Regularity Meeting dated June 21st. Proposed action to approve a resolution of the 217 Patrick Liff Festival as a signature event, and the City of Richcrest can authorize special event insurance." Number four, "Proposed action to approve a resolution of City Council, the City of Richcrest, to levy and collect sewer fees on the council... On the general tax rolls for fiscal year 2017-18." Number five, "Proposed action to adopt a resolution of the City Council, the City of Richcrest, authorizing the application for federal funding for fiscal year 2017 in the amount of $87,245 under the Federal Transit Act, Section 5311..." I'm not going to read all those numbers. "...with the City Department of Transportation and authorizing the interim city manager Ron Strand to sign and file the application, execute and file all certification of assurances, contracts, or agreements, and that the Transit Service Coordinator is authorized to provide additional information in connection with the application for the Section 5311 Project S., and is authorized to submit and approve requests for the reimbursement of funds from the Department of... For the section of 5311." Number six, "Proposed action to adopt a resolution of the City Council, the City of Richcrest, authorizing the application of federal funding for fiscal year 2018 in the amount of $89,269 under the Federal Transit Tax Transit Act section..." I'm not going to read all those numbers if you want it. They're available. "...with the California Department of Transportation authorizing the interim city manager Ron Strand to sign the contracts or amendments and that... And agreements, and that the Transit Services Coordinator is authorized to provide additional information in connection with the application of Section 5311 Project S., and is authorized to submit and approve requests for reimbursement of funds from the Department for the Section 5311." Number seven. Can you hear me now? Hear me now? Okay, I'm... Okay. "Proposed action to adopt a resolution, the City Council, the City of Richcrest, accepting the offer to dedicate right-of-ways for streets and utilities for Graft Avenue, Ward Avenue, Sidney Avenue, and McLean Street in the City of Richcrest, as shown on Parcel Map 10819. In Book 52, pages 128 through 131 of Parcel Maps, County of Kern Recorder's Office authorizing the mayor to sign the certificate of acceptance and direct the city clerk to record the document." And number eight, "Approve contract change order number four with the contractor Griffin Company for additional roadway reconstruction of West Bowman Road as part of the South China Lake Boulevard Regional Service Transportation Plan, our STP project, and authorize the interim city manager Ron Strand to sign change order number four." Okay, I heard Lindsey ask for four. And eight. Okay, is there any others? I was going to ask for four also. Is there anyone else who has... Anyone else who has any they would like to add or pull? I'm asking Council first. Council? Okay, any public? Okay, so, is there any other that... Anybody wish to be polled? Then we'll entertain a motion to approve two, three, and eight. No. Seven, sorry.
Mr. Mauer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
All right, number four, Mr. Spear. Hey, Lindsey, you asked for it first, so if you would...
Yes.
Yes.
-make your questions.
So I'm trying to understand, I know that we have this rate study that we did, um, a while back in, uh, 2013, and it's my understanding from being on infrastructure and materials that-
Waste water treatment plant to address the collection system, repair and replacement, and then partially debt financed through the state revolving fund. Then number two was to defer, uh, to defer the new wastewater treatment plant, address the existing wastewater treatment plant and, uh, collection system with repair and replacement. And this was also to be only partially debt financed and to build a capital reserve of fifteen million dollars over five years, which is what we're on track to do. Then this led to, I want to make sure I've got both the slides here. Yeah, do something back up. And, uh, when the, uh, the financial analysis was updated based on counsel direction and our financial analysis, uh, analysts came back with three scenarios. The first scenario was very much like you'd see in an EIR, it was to do nothing. Basically said if we continued, if we did not raise the rates, we weren't even in a position to, uh, within about three years, we wouldn't even be in a position to operate the plant, let alone maintain and repair it. So they suggested a scenario, uh, and with the rate increases that's shown, but they were showing a, I think, a level there of a little less, less than four as far as their target, uh, for their reserve. Now you have to understand, that's the target, uh, for, uh, funding this with, uh, finance, with debt financing in the year 2018. And this was also with the idea that the, uh, you'd still have to add to that amount, the amount for your two reserves, your catastrophic reserve and reserves. This reserve here is indicated, uh, for capital, uh, in order to secure financing. Then scenario three was a cost of service adjustments, and this was to build the cash for, cash reserves for future, for future sewer plant. And this was also to increase the repair and replacement for sewers. Now you're looking at a target reserve level of over twenty million dollars. Now, what the interesting thing is, is in past discussions, people have pointed to this scenario and say, well, that's what the reserve should be at.
Dennis, put it back. Thank you.
Uh, that, that, this is what the reserve should be at. The problem is, is neither scenario two nor scenario three was approved by the council. It was a hybrid. Scenario three, I mean, two is a hundred percent, uh, change in the rates from what two thou, what 2013 was, uh, to a fifty percent in 215 to three percent, three percent, three percent. That isn't what occurred. When you go to scenario three, they ask for a hundred percent, uh, in, from 2013 to 2014, with a hundred percent in 215, three percent, three percent, three percent in the following years. That did not happen either. Ours is, uh, I believe it, whoops, didn't mean to do that. Ours is, uh, a forty percent, fifty percent, forty percent, three percent, three percent, three percent is what was actually approved. And, uh, the fact of the matter as far as where we're at with, well, let me go through the slides and then I'll get to the fact of the matter. I was on our, with our bond counsel and his consultant yesterday. Fact of the matter, I'll just skip to the fact of the matter and then I'll finish the, uh, this, uh, this, uh, information about this, uh, plan that was, uh, that was approved by counsel, uh, five years ago. Fact of the matter, the state revolving fund right now has, uh, applications for about over four times the amount of money they actually have. Uh, our bond counsel's consultant that's preparing a study for us right now, uh, he, uh, he also indicated that projects that were supposed to be funded by the state revolving fund, which actually began, the special fund began in 2013, uh, they, that were supposed to be funded in 15, 16, have already received the information from the state, they're being pushed out to 18, 19. So, uh, if you, the, if you have any expectations of building the plant in the next couple of years, uh, you're not even, you're, you won't even be looking at state revolving fund money. And then, as you alluded to and mentioned, that, uh, the single-family rates right now, uh, if, or the various cities that are reasonably close, close by, those are the rates right now. Bakersfield, uh, obviously they have a population where they can spread their, uh, spread their costs a whole lot more than the other cities, but this is where we stack up with the other cities nearby. And then for the other studies that were included in the, uh, financial, uh, analysis, this is the change that's been done. Uh, the, the lower numbers, the numbers closest to the green bars, those were the numbers that were actually in the study. The latest number staff has called are the higher numbers above the bar, and that's where those, uh, cities are today. And that's where we stack up based on the cities that were included in the original financial analysis. And, uh, well, this is just, uh, the resolution that you had before you, I think, is part of this. And then, oh, there was, there has in the past, there was, I just wanted to include it, because in the past, there's always been discussion that the Navy doesn't pay its fair share. So this is an excerpt from the Navy contract. You can read it for yourself, but what it says is that, yes, they'll agree to consider to renegotiate, but it's only going to be after we've done a general rate increase for all the customers. However, they also, uh, point out the fact that what we calculate when we do our analysis and say what the rate should be, doesn't apply to them. We have to go back to number one where it says they will renegotiate after we've established new rates, and that's what was done, uh, when this, uh, uh, this, uh, rate increase was originally adopted. And I think that's the last slide. Oh, that's just to tell you how it's calculated if there's any, uh, whoops.
Oh, so, sorry. So you said we picked a hybrid between two and three. So what reserve level do we actually need then? I didn't hear that number.
We should need about nineteen thousand dollars in reserve.
Nineteen million, you mean?
A million, excuse me. Yeah, it would be nice if we were nineteen thousand.
I was like, we've exceeded that number.
Because I'm adding the, I'm adding the, oopsie, am I going right? I'm adding, from the original initial analysis, uh, they're, uh, I'm adding the fact that they're, they suggest four million dollars in terms of- Four million dollars in terms of reserves that are operational in nature. Then they're, uh, they're recommending another fifteen million dollars. Must be going the wrong way.
There it is.
There it is. They're, uh, suggesting that, and we have a hybrid between these two, and they're suggesting we need, should have another fifteen million dollars. A couple of reasons for that is, we're not going to get a hundred percent financing. We're very, unless, unless you're going to be out in the outer years, you're not going to receive any state revolving fund money for the next two years. And so it puts you in a position, you're only going to be in the bond market. And to be in the bond market, they're going to look at your finances. They're going to look at what you have in reserve. They're going to look at what you have, uh, and what you have in terms of cash flow coming in, uh, to repay that loan. And one of the primary things that the bond counsel, actually, bond counsel and his consultant was telling me, is the more you have in reserves and the more you can show you're going to participate, or you have participating cash. Uh, and the cash doesn't hurt because worst case, you're not having to, uh, increase your debt load at that particular point in time because you can participate in the, uh, with, in the, uh, the, the actual capital cost of the project with cash and then, uh, you know, bond for the, uh, for the remainder of the amount. But in addition though, uh, one of the, uh, the advantages of, of the reserve we have is when we originally, when the, when the council originally approved the current, uh, plan as far as the, uh, forty, fifty, forty-three, three, uh, percent, it, it never anticipated building a tertiary plant. So if a tertiary plant is really on the table, and I believe it is, based in the overdraft situation we have in this valley, if that's in the, if that's in the cards, that's ten million dollars that was not anticipated in this particular, uh, formulated calculation for the necessary reserve for the new, new plant. And also, uh, the amounts associated with the rehab of the curved sewer system were not anticipated to the degree that they were. It was two point four million dollars for this first phase project, Church Avenue, uh, for instance, and we only anticipated maybe eight hundred thousand dollars a year. And so anyways, the recommendation of our consultant and staff's recommendation, in fact, is to, uh, complete the plan that was-
To speaker again.
To complete the plan that was adopted, um, uh, five years ago with this final three percent.
Okay. Sorry. All right. So then you, so basically we need to have nineteen million in the reserve fund, it sounded like. So we have nineteen million.
We're close.
Nineteen point two million, I think, is what it said, but, okay. And so I'm just trying to understand why we need to finish this last three percent. If we know we have, sorry, guys, we have nineteen million now, plus the city, we actually owe ourselves an additional three million because we've borrowed from our own fund. So that would bring us up to over twenty-
To keep us with the cash flow that would be able to, uh, pay the debt service on the bonds, on the debt financing.
Right. But we actually have over the amount that we need, is what I-
Right, but the idea is, is, uh, a lot of that cash will be used for the capital. It won't be there for repayment. The cash flow that you need-
Dennis, you're getting away from the mic again.
The cash flow that you need, uh, to repay the debt service on the bonds, that's going to come from the cash flow, which is why you have to keep the, uh, this level right now. Now, uh, I've said before that once the, when we have real numbers, I think it is true that the counsel can come back and take a look, but when I say real numbers, we don't know what the bond market's going to be and what that, uh, the debt service is going to be when it's, uh, right now, at this point in time. We also don't know what the true operating cost of, of the plant's going to be. We also don't know, uh, until we actually design a project, we go out and bid, what the cost is going to be. We need to have, we need to have built that plant. We need to have operated for at least a year and see what our true costs are, what our capital costs were, what our operating costs are. Then, then the counsel can come back and say, you know what? We, uh, we're taking too much, or you know what? We don't have enough, and we need to adjust it. But that would be the appropriate time, and that's my belief and that's consultant's belief, uh, appropriate time to reconsider, uh, what, where the rate should be.
One of the things that I wanted to ask, am I interrupting or have you-
No, I'm just, uh, sound thing.
Okay. One of the things that I wanted to ask is the eleven dollars that is going to increase the, um, residential people. I can't imagine that I, that we're going to begrudge, and I use that word facetiously, the eleven dollars that we're going to ask them to pay additionally when we're going to spend fifty or so, or more, million dollars on a project. If we can get two, three, twenty, whatever more million dollars into the pro, into the fund, into the reserve, we have saved ourselves interest, we have saved ourselves the ability to, maybe even savings on the dollars total. And it seems to me, when you look at what you have, if I'm going to spend eleven dollars or finance thirty million more because I don't have enough when I can finance less, it is a cost savings to every individual homeowner. When I look at what it's going to pay for the commercial users, we haven't even talked about them, but one of the highest commercial users, users was thirty-seven thousand dollars. And their, um, rates can be lowered based on the amount of water they're using and conserving. And when you look at one of the highest, uh, rate payers, and I thought I had that piece of paper that you, I had asked if someone could tell me with the water savings this year, how much that went down. Ron, um, and you sent it to me, I think you sent it to all of us. Can you tell me what it was? Because it was virtually, um, not a lot of increase when their three percent of thirty-seven thousand dollars was significantly, significantly less than it should have been because they saved the water and utilized less into the facility.
The, the one account you're referring to, those thirty-seven thousand, actually is only going to experience a hundred and ten dollar increase for the entire year.
Thank you. That was it. I couldn't believe it when I looked at that based on their water conservation.
Right.
And I was really thinking, this is how we save and do what's best for everybody.
The, the delta went up three percent, but the less water that you use, the more you're going to reduce that cost overall. It really just has to do with the flow into the sewer plant.
And that was an easy one to do because it was so large, whereas some of them are, are several hundred, one is three hundred and seventy-eight dollars, the others are, are a lot more. And I don't, I don't say that anything is cheap, but the fact remains that by doing this, keeping this three percent increase of eleven dollars and the three percent increase on the commercial is going to save us money in the long run. To ignore that opportunity to save eleven dollars to me is penny wise and dollar foolish. I had originally asked, told, said I was going to pull this because I didn't think we had all our figures down yet so we know what we're going to need. I still don't think we know totally what we're going to need until we design it and build it.
That's correct.
To say that I'm going to save you eleven dollars to cost you a whole lot more in the future, I don't think is smart reasoning. Help me, am I, am I in error in anything I've said?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Is there any other counsel comment on this item?
Yeah, um, I've read some of the emails, and I know one of the factors is, well, maybe we go, we get to one point eight percent. There's no guarantee we're going to have state money. In fact, it looks pretty dim.
That's correct.
So we've got to figure we're going to pay a higher interest. And I'm, I'm of the feeling, I would rather have more reserves so we can put more down and borrow less on the bonds. And, you know, in a worst-case scenario, what if the bid on the sewer plant comes in the same way the bid on the, on the baseball fields does? You know, we figure it's going to be fifty billion, it comes in sixty, you know, uh, and then we get caught really short. So, um, I'm, I'm of the feeling we need to continue with the rate increases, and then when we get the bids and we find out what it's going to cost, and, and if we've got a surplus, then we can cut back. But I think it'd be foolish at this point because we don't really have a good, I mean, we have projections, but, you know, engineering projections are just professional guesses. So that, they may or may not be accurate, especially the longer we wait.
Is there any other counsel comment?
Speaking of the longer we wait part, speaking of the longer we wait part, um, the wastewater treatment plant location is part of the reason why we've seen such a steep increase in the cost of building because we keep delaying, waiting on negotiating with the Navy. And so we're still negotiating and kind of in the same spot. And so that concerns me as well, that we keep kicking the can down the road and it's costing us more money that way as well.
Not, not kicking the can. I, I, that is, had we done that in the past, and I don't know if kicking the can down the road is a fair representation, but yes, there was a lot of time delay. But right now, the Navy is waiting on our bond counsel to come back with, with, uh, our answer to what we think for the line-by-line negotiations we've gone through. And I asked Dennis in an email, where are we with it? And Dennis, can you respond?
Uh, yes, I checked with our bond counsel, and he right now is on hold because we have a, uh, he has a consultant that's preparing a study for us, which will give our bond counsel information so we can respond to the Navy. And so I, uh, went, I, when, um, our bond counsel said that he was on hold, I called the, the subconsultant to our bond counsel, spoke with him, and he said he's probably about two weeks out from finishing the information that our bond counsel needs.
So potentially in two weeks, we will go back to the Navy and say, how, what do you think about this alternative?
That's correct.
And then come back. So at the very most, let's say it's another, let's be ridiculous, it's another month. In two weeks, we will have, we will be back with the Navy, and Navy will have some time to get back to us. I think that is a long time that we've waited, but we've waited and, but we can't talk about what previous councils did, what the way, what, with the Navy previous, um, leadership did. All we can say is it's the way it is now. And that we can talk about, I think, fairly and legitimately.
In the agreement with the Navy, is our bond counsel being overly conservative?
He's being overly protective, I think. A- and it's, and it's partly in, in terms of not just protecting the city, but being able to sell these bonds.
Well, I understand that, but I still wonder if he's being overly protective, because, um, you know, we get hung up on a few phrases in the, in the agreement, and, um, the thought that the Navy would, would shut the plant down for a national emergency is pretty doggone remote.
I, I, I felt that that provision, I mean, and the Navy agreed with you, but I felt the provision he requested, that they balked on was, was innovative, where he asked for a, uh, a clause in there, that if they did, uh, virtually asked the city to leave, that the Navy would reimburse this for a cost of the plant, so, wh- which would solve the entire, uh, issue.
In case of an emer- emergency or not, they still need the sewer plant. So I, I think they're not gonna shut it down, because that will cause an emergency.
One, one of the things we asked about, when bond counsel said, if we cannot sell this bond, we have no ability to finish negotiations, and if the bond counsel is instructing us, and I don't know that that's gonna be the final recommendation, saying because of this, we can't do that, I want us to be able to see if in other areas of agreement that the Navy has had with other cities, with other entities, were, were their bond councils able to sell those agreements, even if there was some slight, um, or however, whatever, even if there was some slight disagreement, could we simply say, we understand bond counsel's job is to protect us fully as they possibly can, to make sure we're not hurt, and make sure the, the bonds can be sold at the lowest possible rate? I want us to be able to look at that and say, we have to make sure that we have the sewer plant, whether we have it on the Navy facility, or we have it on the ci- city facility, and we are going to have it. It's as simple as that, because we don't have any other alternative. I think we need to look at bond counsel's recommendation with, with questioning eyes, and say, is this the only way it can be, or is there another way to negotiate it if bond counsel says no? With, and it's our decision to say, do we want a hundred percent assurance, or are we okay with ninety-five, whatever? I don't know what those numbers are, and I'm just pulling numbers out of my head, because I don't know. But I want us to understand that bond counsel is our advisor, our person who's telling us what we can and cannot do, along with staff, who's giving us good recommendations, and we're going to get this solved, because we don't have any other choice. It will be done. The only question is, what it's gonna cost us, what they're going to pay, how it's going to be put up, and how much longer we're going to delay, no matter whose fault it is. Again, rest of council comment? No other council comment? Okay, is there public comment?
My name is Stan Ratora. I've been up here before on occasion to keep talking about the rate.
In the, into the mic.
Stan Ratora. Um, as we all know, uh, by the way, first of all, I haven't heard about five percent of what Mr. Spear said, so I don't know, um, I, I may or may not respond to anything that he said, uh, with, with exception of one thing that I'll talk about at the end. As we all know, there was a twenty thirteen rate study, and I would like to make three points relative to that study. Uh, first of all, the revenues that we are currently receiving are running well ahead of the projections listed in that rate study. Um, if you look at the FY seventeen actuals, they exceeded the FY seventeen rate study projections by more than three hundred thousand dollars. If you look at the FY seventeen actuals, they exceed the projected FY eighteen projections. That is, if we do not take in one extra dollar this year than we did last year, we will still exceed, uh, what the projections are in the rate study. Now, when I talk about projections in the rate study, I'm talking about the actual, original rate study, and as most of you know, that rate study was modified, uh, by the Navy, because they would not accept it, and I understand why they didn't accept it, uh, and, and I don't blame them for that, they had a legitimate reason, but we did give the Navy a twenty-nine percent discount, because there was, there was a flaw in our rate study, a reasonable thing. So, our actual projections, based upon the modified rates that we gave the Navy, were ac- are actually gonna be much lower than the projections that are listed in that report. As far as I know, there's never been made public what the actual projections are, but if we exceeded by more than three hundred thousand dollars the original, then obviously we exceeded by much more than that the altered or modified. Um, point number two, the reserves are running way ahead of the rate study projections. The FY seventeen actual reserve is nineteen point two million dollars versus what's listed in the, uh, rate study as five million dollars. Uh, right now, the FY eighteen budget shows a wastewater fund surplus of four point five million dollars, which will add to that surplus, uh, to the reserve. The FY nineteen budget should have a similar surplus, something around four to four to five, four to four point five, uh, million dollars. So, and the city owes the wastewater fund seven million dollars for the combination of the solar park and the Innu franchise fee reimbursement. Um, so if you add all that up, the effective reserve that we will have by FY nineteen, which is the first that we could ever actually start construction, will be in the order of thirty-five million dollars. Um, and, and I think, I was verified by Mr. Spear tonight, that we, we need to get in line for a loan from the State Revolving Fund, and that's not gonna get here for six months or a year, it could be a year and a half, so, these three, this reserve just keeps building up, and building up, and building up. The, the largest factor in the rate study is the repayment of the capital, the borrowing. Um, the rate study assumed a fifty million dollar bond, taken out at seven percent interest, and that generated a four million dollar payment. The one thing you've gotta understand about a seven percent interest rate is fifty-eight cents on the dollar actually go to pay interest rather than principal. Um, now, with the reserves that we got, I'm expecting that we'll actually be putting, or having to borrow less than forty million dollars. And there is a State Revolving Fund that is designed by the state just for, uh, sewer plants, and that payment at one point eight percent interest is one point seven million dollars. So, in other words, there is a two point three million dollar savings by going to the State Revolving Fund. And, and the, the, for every dollar we pay in, twenty-three cents on the dollar goes to the interest, rather than the fifty-eight percent interest when you have a seven percent loan. So, the bottom line on all that is, with the revenues well ahead of projections, reserves millions, if not tens of million dollars ahead of projections, and capital payments less than one half of the rate study projections, there is a very, very low risk associated with decreasing, uh, the wastewater fees, not just zeroing out the increase, but actually is, I hope everybody got my email suggesting that we should actually lower it by ninety dollars per account, which would lose us about a million dollars a year. But looking at a reserve two years from now of over thirty billion dollars, I, I don't see that as any risk at all. The, the one comment I would like to respond to Mr. Spear, is he's talking about a tertiary plant that could cost ten million dollars. Now, according to the F, the calendar of twenty fifteen plan that was produced by P and P, I believe it was more like eight and a half million, but the thing you've gotta remember is, the state, believe it or not, is actually looking out for us for once. Uh, there is a fifty percent grant on, on anything having to do with recycling, so that eight million dollars, it's really four million dollars. And not only that, but the state has a one percent interest rate, rather than a one point eight percent interest rate. Um, in my mind, trying to do anything other than getting a State Revolving Fund loan is sheer financial idiocy. We really need to have a low-cost loan. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Can I ask one question, please? Can you tell me if I mischaracterize what you've said? I'm trying to see if I can explain it so I can understand it without adding in billions and millions of dollars. If I say that we can save interest and dollars spent, because you referred to, um, I don't remember, I have your number here written, whatever it was, if I can spend eleven dollars and save millions, how is that being irresponsible?
Okay, there's actually two answers, two parts to that answer. One is that the people who are using the wastewater facility should be paying for it. That is, the people, and, and nobody's using that new wastewater facility yet. We, we aren't gonna actually start construction for another year or two, and therefore, it's the people that are here from two years to fifty-two, to sixty-two years from now, who should be paying for it. The, the other aspect of it is, you, you do benefit typically, if you're buying a house at six or seven or eight percent, putting as much down payment as you can, because, again, as I pointed out, at seven percent interest, which is what the rate study showed, and that's what boosted up all those costs, fifty-eight percent of every dime you pay back on the loan goes to interest, okay? However, at one point eight percent interest, that fifty-eight percent number goes down to twenty-three, so-
Why wouldn't I wanna say that?
The benefit of buying down the loan goes way, way, way down, and the benefit is that the people who are using the plant are actually paying for the plant without that high, um, penalty of the interest.
But Stan, huh, again, I'm not trying to be argumentative, I truly am, because you have sent us so much information. I'm truly trying to understand why we wouldn't wanna save that money.
Be, be, well, again, the, the people that are paying for it, and have been paying it for the last years, four years, are not the people that are gonna use it necessarily. It's the people who, it's because their people are gonna move, and people are gonna die. So, um, wh- what we want to do, and in fact, all the Prop, Prop two eighteen, the purpose, is that you, you want the people that are using the service to pay for the service. And right now, what we're doing is people that aren't using that particular service, because it's not built, are still paying for it.
But all the years in the past, that is the way building projects go. You are paying for it as it is being worked upon, considered, uh, bonds have gone out, costs have been, and it, and whether you pay for it this year, last year, or next year, if you happen to leave, we'll be sorry to see you go, but you'll miss that savings. Why, I, I, I find it difficult to understand, and maybe-
Again, the, the basis of Prop two eighteen is that you pay for the service you get, not a penny more and not a penny less. And the people right now are paying more, and the people ten, twenty, thirty, forty years are gonna be paying less. And it's the people now that are paying are the ones that we should be concerned about.
Yes, but it also could be argued that five, ten years ago, people really weren't paying enough for the service.
N- no, actually, that's not true. We had, when we passed this particular, uh, rate study, there, we had a nine million dollar reserve, okay? So it, it wasn't like we didn't have reserve, we had a nine million dollar reserve, and in addition to that, um, we had loaned to the city three million dollars to the solar plant, so we had a twelve million dollar reserve, and-
Well, yeah, and I understand the three million-
And, and then there was a four million dollars that the city took for Innu franchise fees, so that puts us up at sixteen million dollars. So we had active, effectively, a sixteen million dollar reserve, had the city not borrowed the money from the wastewater plant. So in my, in my estimation, even though the ten dollars a month or a hundred and twenty dollars a year was low, it was all that was needed to keep the reserves more than high enough.
You know, and I, I don't wanna argue about what was done previously, like the three million dollars. The, this, the state took that three million, they've agreed to give it back, but they're not gonna give it back to us in a check like they took it from us. They're gonna give it back on what's called ROFs, which is, which is supported by property tax, which we may get it back over a ten or fifteen-year period, uh, you know, that's the bottom line.
As, as long as it's being paid back at the same rate that we're paying the, um, loan off, it, it won't make any difference, just like the money that, that the city so-called borrowed, the four million dollars for the Innu, if they were paying one point eight percent rather than point five percent interest, that money could be going to pay off four million dollars worth of debt. Like, it, it, it actually does even out. All right? But anyway, we might, we absolutely had more than enough surplus reserve at, when we actually increased the fees from a hundred and twenty to three hundred and sixty dollars, we did. I'd be glad to sit down and go through the map. Thank you.
Thank you for answering the questions. Is there any other public comment? Oh, Dennis, I'm sorry, Dennis.
Just to comment on that projection of a thirty million dollar reserve, uh, the fact of the matter is, is once we clear the hurdle with the Navy, we, we have to, uh, bring on our, a consultant to design the facility, and as I recall from the, uh, report that had been made, I think that's in the order of over ten million dollars for, for the design. It's on, it's on? Oh, it's on.
Um, yeah, I don't disagree with what Dennis is saying, but all of that money for bringing on the design agent, that's all part of the total cost of the facility. So, when we pay for that, that's like paying down the bond, it doesn't make any difference.
James Matthews, again. I, I'm gonna take a little different approach. First of all, I think there was enough known about this particular item and the objections to it, that it should not have been on the consent calendar. And what is wrong with this PA system? This is the worst I've ever heard it. You don't know how to talk. My, this particular item refers to, and probably has for the last four years, three years, referred to Exhibit A and Exhibit B. I went back and looked at Exhibit B, because I was interested in what my increase was going to be on a personal residence, single- going to be on a personal residence, single-family residence. The Exhibit E and B, Exhibit B, are labeled sufficiently. However, when you look at, there's two columns in each, as I recall. I didn't print them out. But the columns are not labeled, so I didn't know what the hell I was looking at. And I think this is inadequate information, and the lawyer needs to step in on this because if it's inadequate information, you can't do anything tonight. Now, if I had millions of dollars, which I probably won't after this increase goes in, then I would take and make a challenge with my super-duper lawyer, which I could afford if I had a million dollars or more, and challenge this whole thing. That is, the surfees increases.
Is there any other public comment?
So this will work at all, at least for a minute or two? Okay. The numbers that Mr. Rittor has put forward for the last four years have been entirely accurate, addressed the point, which is basically been ignored the whole last four years. You know, at this point, let's just take a longer view, turn, long timeline view, look at this, just kind of, they put one aspect of this in perspective. But the amount of surplus that the city is taking in on this fund every year, we could pay off, we could build the plant, pay off the loan we had to take to build the plant. And I would really be surprised, you know, without a big battle, that any future councils are going to want to decrease the rate. So let's assume it stays as it is. Shouldn't back off? I don't know what, okay, let's try this. So, we build the plant, and fifty years from now, we need to build another plant. Well, if you look at the amount of surplus we're taking in and multiply that by fifty years, you come up with something close to two hundred million dollars fifty years from now, sitting in a fund, and then you wouldn't even need to take out a loan. In fact, you probably have enough money plus a bunch left over. So that seems to say clearly to me, we're charging too much to our people. Now, the point of this rate is that people get charged just because they need to be charged to fund the thing, to pay the loan, to keep it running, and so forth and so on, not build huge reserves above and beyond what we're ever projected that we needed, which is basically where we're at right now. And we're in, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry to say it, but when you say, well, we're going, let's spend eleven dollars to save millions, number one, we're not saving, we're not getting millions more, and it's not eleven dollars. It's eleven dollars for every single taxpayer in the town. And so this eleven dollars might get you another hundred thousand plus, that's about it. So, and we don't even need. And that's the point. You know, the thing here is to, you know, we need to address a possible rate decrease, but for this item tonight, we're talking about going ahead and increasing it, which we absolutely do not need to do. Now, you say, oh, it's a big deal, eleven dollars. Well, if you live down on Wilson Street, or Robertson Street, or some of these other streets, people are having to go out and collect cans or bottles to pay their living expenses, you'd probably think eleven dollars was a big deal. People that have a lot of money, sure, no big deal. Just keep charging to me. I don't even look at my property tax bill. But there are people that makes a big deal, too, and those people need to get consideration. And since we don't even need the money, there's really not any reason to do this.
Mike, you're forgetting that Dennis said, perhaps you're not, I don't know whether you are or not, forgive me. Dennis said, as soon as we get these costs determined, we can look at it and say, do we need to lower it? Do we need to not charge it next time? You're assuming that for the next fifty years, we're going to increase three percent or whatever it is all along, and you don't know that neither, do we?
No, I just said, leave it just like it is, and what I was saying holds. Just at current rate, right now. That's where we get to. And I hear also, unfortunately, a lot of assuming and a lot of guesses, and a lot of what is being thrown out. Well, this is not supposed to be the way it works. We're supposed to be having good engineering assumptions being made and projections being made. Why in the heavens' name do we pay a consultant to do this rate study for us in the first place? His assumptions and his end results are worthless, and all we're going to do is wave our hands and say, we just need to keep raising rates, we need to keep raising rates. We just want to have a pile of cash laying over here, then we should have saved our money paying consultants and say, we just want to pile cash, and when we finally get to where we know what we're going to do, then we'll do it. Well, that's not the way it was ever supposed to work. It's not the way a Prop 218 hearing is supposed to work whatsoever. And as a matter of fact, I don't believe a tertiary plant was even part of that rate study, and yet we're trying to throw that in on it. So all these statements that are being made tonight are disappointing me highly, because I think that the thought process is really faulty here. And at the very least, we ought to maybe face up to that and say, I guess we just don't need to increase the citizens' tax anymore.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment?
Madam Mayor, Stephen Morgan, 729 North Inyo Street, The Scourge of Ridcrest. Dennis, how much do we have in the bank?
About nineteen million dollars.
Okay, not thirty-five? Nineteen. Okay. And that is reasonably close to the projections that the original study...
Wanted us to be at two thousand and eighteen, yes.
Okay. So we're where we're supposed to be. As per the study, as was discussed a long time ago.
Five years, well, two thousand and thirteen.
To be clear, did we follow appropriately two eighteen, Prop 218 rules?
That's correct.
No question.
No question.
So in the resolution that you showed that I still have, the city has complied with each of the requirements of Section Six of Article thirteen D of the California Constitution with respect to the actions taken. Sewer charge rates established by section do not exceed the amounts permissible under Article thirteen D for a fee for sewer service, and the sewer charge is not a tax. Okay. So that we have a little history. Now, let's talk about our plan. This started way before two thousand and thirteen. I was newly on the council when we were fined heavily by the La Hantin Water District because our plant had reduced capacity and because our sewer ponds were overflowing because of the wind action in the ponds. And we started talking about a new plan. And we talked way back when about how the councils of past had been really great guys and gals to not increase the rates. Had we been on a regular schedule of increases, we wouldn't be where we were when this was passed. It didn't happen that way. This was a catch-up to make a plant possible. And you're in the fifth year of it. You're where you should be, regardless of what Stan Rittora thinks. You are where you should be by the numbers that the city has. Now, let's talk about other reasons to continue this. Are we environmentally conscious now? Yes, we are. And that tertiary plant, if you go all the way back to the first drawings, you'll see a little box in the corner on the base property. That box was put there by me, and that was a tertiary treatment plant. There was no money ever allocated to it, ever figured out if we would ever be, if we would ever build it, because back then, nobody thought we'd need it. We darn sure need it now. Absolutely have to have it, folks. You have to put it in there. The iterations of the plant, over and over and over, the changes to different companies, all those things, one thing is constant. I remember having the same conversations with the Navy that you guys have been having. There's always been an excuse by the Navy. And I'm very regretful of that, because they should have signed a piece of paper a long time ago to let us build that plant on the property on the base. It's not that difficult. It really isn't. I would challenge the Navy tonight to knock off the bandying about and just sign a document and let you do it, if that's what you so choose. Okay, so environmentally, it makes sense, and the cost makes sense. Economic development, are we for economic development in this community? I've been hearing you guys talk about it. You're all for it. Well, you're going to need a good sewer system in place, not just the plant, but every single pipe running underneath the city streets. And you're going to need that money to do it. Because the cost of that, as an estimate, I believe is low. I'm not, I'm no genius, as some people will attest to in this audience, but the costs are low because you're going to have to do so much more to fix the system we have. How many of you have been keeping up with the camera, the underground camera? How many of you have been watching those pictures? Raise your hands, please. One? Wow. Okay. I would ask you, please, to get with your public works director and go through some of the things that we already know, that I knew four years ago, as a city council member, about the current level of disrepair underground. And that's just the areas that I knew about then. Because as we all know, the codes changed over the years, correct, Councilman Mauer? There was this pipe, cement was used, clay was used, all kinds of different materials. The clay pipes are pretty much gone.
No, there's still a lot of them in Ridcrest Heights.
Okay, are they still in working order?
I don't know about that. Every house I've built in Ridcrest Heights is hooked onto a clay pipe.
I believe they're either cracked or they're leaking, by deterioration of the clay.
But that eliminates the water going in the sewer pipe.
That's true. So environmentally, you have to be conscious about leaking into the ground. But you're right, Mr. Mauer. And then, of course, infrastructure. This is an infrastructure issue. These issues that you're contemplating tonight after this year, I agree with the synopsis that after you get the real costs, and after you fully understand those costs, then you can reduce the rates. Because if we go by the theory that we don't just, okay, I'm going to get this right. This is what I heard. You let the people pay for it, right? Down the road, it's their problem. It's not my problem. Well, if you wait to buy the fire truck until the fire has already started, you're doing a great disservice. This resolution and this increase was to put in place for future councils the ability to be able to go out to bond to build that plant. This is an advantage for you that I sure didn't have, just like Measure L and Measure V. Those are advantages to you. Leave it the way it is now. Make your change when you know for sure, if the assumption comes true, that there's too much money, but there's not. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Can I ask Dennis a quick question?
Dennis? Steve.
How much are we using right now of our wastewater treatment plant's capacity?
Our capacity? Because of the water conservation, we've decreased from, when I first got here, we were exceeding seventy-five percent, which was putting us on the threshold of receiving a NOV, Notice of Violation from La Hantin. But because of water conservation, we've decreased now to about sixty-seven, sixty-eight percent capacity.
Okay.
So capacity isn't so much the issue that it was, but in fact, the antiquity of the plant and the need for a tertiary facility is.
Could you possibly get to counsel some of those videos that John had done and others have done, to show what the condition of those pipes are?
There's actually a, just south of City Hall here, about two blocks down, there's actually a street that, there's actually a street where, when they ran through there, I'm looking, I'm not sure what I'm seeing, so I asked John, and he says, well, the soffit, the pipe, he said, that's not the soffit, that's the arch in the ground. Pipes are, has completely worn away.
So more than a few pipes. Okay, Stan.
Just a couple little things here. The actual report, and I'm looking at the final version of that rate study, stated in FY seventeen, if you look at the bottom line, the reserve, the reserve is five million dollars. We have nineteen million dollars. It's there, and I don't know how anybody can refute that. Second of all, I did not say we had a thirty-five million dollar reserve today. I said at the end of FY nineteen, which is the absolute earliest that we're going to get a loan to do anything, it could be thirty-five million dollars. The issue about, somebody was very kind about not raising the rates. Again, as I pointed out to Mr. Mauer a few minutes ago, the reason we didn't raise the rates is because we didn't need to raise the rates. We had a humongous surplus. If it hadn't been for borrowing from the city, from the wastewater, general fund borrowing from the wastewater fund, we would have had fifteen or sixteen million dollars, all right? So, I mean, come on. The numbers are all there. Just look at the documentation. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other public comment? Is there any other council comment? Is there a motion?
I move approval of number four.
Is there a second? I'll second it.
Mr. Bauer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas? Ms. Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
We can't comment now, can we? It's too late. Can I come and comment?
I don't have an objection, is counsel having a question?
I just, you know, I'm torn on it, actually, to be truthful, because as far as where we might be, I think in almost every category, we're going to be needing money. I mean, bureaucracy never goes backwards. I mean, it just doesn't. It never goes backwards. We're always going to be needing more money. And the second part of it, though, is that, you know, I think that it's important for when we do have reserves and we have met our goals and we do have a surplus, and as long as we don't borrow from that surplus for other uses and so forth and so on, then that fund should be okay. I'm just really torn because we've had a whole... I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm just really torn because we've had a whole lot of numbers from two very, or three very smart people, and a lot more than that have been involved with this. From my standpoint, looking at it, and, you know, we're kind of up here trying to read it and decipher it as best we can without being masters in finance, it's very difficult. I, I, I don't believe my basic values deals with just raising increases, whether it be eleven dollars, or fifty bucks, or a hundred bucks, unless we absolutely have a definitive, proven, immediate need. Because I think, you know, if we need more in the future, we can increase. If we need less, we can decrease, but we, like I said, bureaucracy never does. It's a little bit of money in one way, but like Mike said, it's, it's, it's an amount, it's a significant amount for those who are counting pennies. I don't know. I, I'm torn, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no.
Ms. Stevens?
Oh, sorry, Mike.
Since he made a comment, I was gonna make a comment. You know, the bond, the bond rate is gonna be determined on how our financial strength is. I was just, now that you voted no, you know that.
Ms. Stevens?
No.
In, in reference, I was checking with legal counsel as well as our clerk, and I, I wanted to change my vote. I voted in there. I want to say yes.
Okay. We have three ayes, two noes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Tell, tell Steve he can come back, come back in.
Thank you, everybody who spoke and cared enough for the long discussion. Okay, so night, item number, um, five. I'm not gonna read it all again, Mr. Spear?
Oh, I think Mr. Matthews brought that up. Must have a question.
I assume you have the same information for both five and six, Mr. Matthews?
Exactly. Well, they're, they're the same except the year and the amounts.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, five and six sound very similar. Are they different, or are they for different things? Just explain what's going on there.
Well, what's happening is we've always been a year behind as far as our application. And this year, they've allowed us, FTA has allowed us to, to do a catch-up year so that we'll be in sync with the current, current budget year. This is for both seventeen, which they consider sixteen, seventeen. This is closed, as well as seventeen, eighteen, which is next year.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, is there any other council comment or public comment on, can we do five and six together? Do you have any objection to that, Mr. Matthews, since you asked it to be polled?
Okay.
Okay, is there any other than council comment or public comment on five and six?
I move approval of five and six.
Second.
Mr. Mauer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, and now we are on number seven.
Eight.
Eight. Thank you. Sorry. I need my glasses.
So for number eight, I just wanted to make absolutely clear, if it's from finance or from Public Works, whoever, that this is not the same pot of money that was designated to be potentially used for the paving machine.
I believe the request was for unallocated TAB funds. TAB funds from the street department that had, that are available from unallocated TAB amounts, balance, is, is what we're proposing to fund this remaining portion of paving.
So a few weeks ago, when we said we had, what was that number? We had a million?
One point, one point one million.
One point one million. We actually had one point four million in excess TAB funds to be allocated? Is what you're saying, that there's a new three hundred thousand dollar pot that was discovered?
Well, the, my original report, this, this has been amended. My original report requested what was rolled over from last year, the three hundred thousand dollars to be utilized to pay this ninety-nine thousand. But I see my report's been amended to say that it's gonna come from the street. It's, currently, there are unallocated TAB funds in the street department in the amount of two hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars. And now, that's been amended in my report here. I can, I can only recite what's, what's being presented there.
I may be able to help on that one. There were a, several streets, three streets, projects that close out, and there was some money that's left over from that one. And the, the paving machine that you're talking about, that money's coming from the one project that they canceled, which is the specific plan. That was a nine hundred thousand dollar allocation that they decided not to move forward. And that's where they're taking your, the, the four hundred thousand dollars from, as well as, I believe, the senior center paving of the parking lot. And actually, and there's also, like you said, that there's another more, some more money left from, for the streets, I believe even after that nine, nine hundred thousand dollars that he's asking for.
Okay. Do we know what we're gonna use the other part for yet, or?
I, we have, we have, staff have not had an opportunity to try to put together what we might look at for, for projects, but.
In all fairness for Mr. Culp, he was on vacation when this decision was made. Obviously, we have a timetable to spend the TAB allocation bond funds, and there's not that urgent of a need to spend Measure L funds, so the decision was made to use the excess TAB.
Thank you.
Is there any other council comment on this item? Is there any council, public comment on this item?
This is a change order. So that means there's a contract. What's the contract? I heard different funds, but what's it being used for?
This is for paving, reconstructing that portion of West, West Bowman, I'm sorry, that's adjacent to the old Walmart structure. It's about a eight-hundred-foot-long stretch of paving that, that requires reconstruction.
Wow, I thought we already had all that done.
Everything but this last portion. The, the Caltrans had required us to do a return right at the corner of Bowman and China Lake. They wanted us to redo the return to make that ADA compliant. The tractor supply company that moved into the old Walmart building also had to do improvements to their driveways along West Bowman. They had to make those driveways ADA compliant. So with that work being, having been completed now, we're able to go ahead and do that last remaining portion of paving such that we'll be done with everything along Bowman and China Lake in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Stan Ratoro. I, I heard a lot of discussion about the availability of various TAB funds. But I guess I didn't hear, and it probably was stated, but it didn't get through my old age mind, how much, there, there was a certain amount of unobligated TAB funds in the order of one point one million dollars. If, if this money is spent, regardless of what fund it is, how much money is still in the TAB unallocated region? There, there are a lot of people talking, but they were talking about different funds back and forth, and I couldn't, honestly didn't follow the conversation. I just, I just like to know what is the actual number for the unallocated TAB funds?
To state it the second would be a guess. We can provide you that number. I know that when they closed out some road projects, there was some residual funding that was discovered. And that funding was used for this project. There still is an additional amount of money, I believe, about two hundred thousand, that's left over. So we can get you the total number. I mean, this is just when they were closing out the accounts, it's just what the residual that was left over.
So we did find additional money in, in addition to the one point one that we were told we had previously?
Correct. As they close out, yeah. As they, as they close out projects, the, the, this is a savings.
Yeah, we always add a little bit for, for whatever might happen.
For contingencies.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good word. Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, I might also add that as we close these projects out, we're realizing that we have some savings or that we're under the budget, the budget or under the allocated amount. So those ones, just, we ask that those go back into the, into the TAB. So a lot of times, the consultant agreements, the, what they estimate the cost for the construction management might be, will fall far less than what the actual bill might be. So, or what the actual allocation might have been. So we have funds going back into the TAB. And that, we've still got projects that we're closing out, too. So it's kind of a continuous process as we close out projects.
And I, in the two and a half years I've been on the council, this is the first change order that wasn't covered in the initial project amount. It's the first time we've had to approve additional money, as I recall. All the others, I think we had, we had the money in there in reserve or whatever. This is the first time we've had to reallocate money.
Yes, that's correct. This was an amount over the original allocation. Yes, we, we've been under the allocation amounts in prior change orders. This one, we're taking advantage of the fact that Griffith is in the area and the Caltrans is allowing us to, to do this change order as a part of the original contract. So we're taking advantage of it. It's to our advantage.
Thank you, Lauren.
Okay, is there any other council comments? Any other public comments, kind of motion?
I am move approval of number eight.
Second.
Mr. Mauer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, next item. We are going to go to, we do not have a public hearing. We do not have any other action items, ordinances, committee reports. City Org is the first one. Mr. Mauer was not able to be at that meeting. However, Councilman Cecil, I mean, Councilman, Planning Commissioner Cecil Gates and,
Solomon.
Was it Bill? No.
Solomon, Solomon.
Solomon?
Solomon, oh, Solomon, forgive me. Solomon Roger Rotman were there. There was some action items on that. We did send the municipal code for codification for nineteen thousand five hundred dollars that had been discussed before and approved, but we did send it back. And we just want to let you know that you all had approved it in the budget previous, so it's in there. The other item was the parking regulations. And there was some discussion about parking for the seventy-two hours. And Chief, could you talk about the report that Jed gave and you gave on why the, why without having a park, parking regulation, we couldn't deal with getting rid of people who violated it over time or however?
Yeah, I can have Acting Chief could lawfully come up and explain that.
So we will, we will have Jed, thank you, sir. You gave us a very long report, and I know you can cut it down a whole lot more than I can.
Basically, the report I provided was, there was some discrepancies or conflicts in the municipal code regarding the ten-day versus the seventy-two hour. And with the municipal code being fixed here shortly, that ten-day should come out. And the reason for the seventy-two hour hold is that mirrors the California vehicle code, which provides us the ability for some of these vehicles to be removed from the roadway. Dilapidated vehicles or cars that are never driven, you know, that start creating spiders and debris and everything else like that.
Okay, you gave us a lot of vehicle codes that, that justify that and ordinances that we have, and I appreciate it. So with that discussion, the committee decided not to make any changes to the parking regulations. The other one was the curfew. We made no changes to that. Whether people believed in, their constitutional rights were being violated by being, having young people being told they had to be in the house at a specific time.
I don't think it says they have to be in the house. I think they have, they can't be loitering.
It can't be out, sorry.
It's not loitering.
They could be going from point A to point B.
Thank you. I wanted them to be in their house, okay? Everybody, you be in your house. But the idea was that there was, in all the years that you have had, there's only been two complaints about people who had made, adults who had made complaints about the curfew law. And so that is why we chose to leave it as it was, based on the idea that young people with legitimate reasons that could explain why they were out working, going to work, whatever, in the curfew time was, was no problem. It's not to deal with them, but to deal with the people who are not doing as they should be and were out in the curfew. And you gave us a long list of the numbers of,
Thirty-four.
Five hun, okay. All the, two hundred and thirty-nine in, in one year of young people who were out and some with legitimate reasons, some with, no, the two hundred and thirty-nine did not have legitimate reasons. Some of them had legal issues why they were out.
The two thirty-nine were the total number of juveniles that were arrested last year. I believe it, I believe the number of curfew was thirty-four?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four or thirty-nine, I don't remember the exact number.
Mid-thirties.
Yes.
Thirty-four, yeah. Then there was some that actually had legal issues with that.
A large percentage, yes.
Yes. And so on that, well, the committee's recommendation was to leave the curfew the way it was.
I'd just like to add, Mayor, is Ridgecrest is not unique in having a curfew. I grew up in San Bernardino, and they have the same, same curfew law. Not that I agreed with it when I was seventeen, but I never got arrested either.
Okay. Then, two items we did not finish, we, that we are going to keep on the agenda is the increased share of property tax. Staff is looking into it as well as others trying to figure out how we can get back to where we need to be based on the RDA changes that have come with, with property tax. So this, that's where we are. A drug addiction hotline, we, we had a committee group that had asked us, but they are working on it themselves, and so we took no action on that. And that was it. Oh, yes, City Council meeting pointers. We had asked that they would put up their ideas. If, if you're uncomfortable speaking at City Council and you would like to have maybe some pointers, maybe some opportunities. Here it is, making your point, making it count, we'll have them up front. And we will have them out front on the podium table. So people want to, and they're pretty good ones. I thought there was a lot of benefit there. Sometimes I think I could use them myself. So anyhow, that's where the end of the, of the City Org Committee. Okay, Finance Committee. You didn't meet.
We did not meet.
You did not meet. You did not meet. Infrastructure.
They're meeting, let's see, we did have a meeting.
I was gone.
The fourth Thursday. I, I went to that meeting with you.
Yeah, that was, I've been on vacation for two weeks, I can't remember what we did. Lauren, do you have a copy of that?
I'm sorry, I do not have a copy of that.
I'll have to refer on that.
I'm sorry, I didn't bring it. So, or I would. Can we report next, next time?
There's a meeting next week and I will not be here.
I will be.
Okay.
If you need me, I'd be happy to help. Okay, the next one is parking racks and quality of life.
We did not meet because it was the fourth of July.
Okay, so Youth Advisory, the second Wednesday. Dark, okay. The Action Committee, that is biannually, it's going to be September and March. The RACBB, we have a report. Wallace, are you gonna take care of that, sir?
Yeah, sure. So they, they received a lovely certificate of special congressional recognition from Kevin McCarthy. And for the event, the National Travel and Tourism Week on May seventh through May the thirteenth. And May twentieth, these, this is just kind of a back recap, Film and California Conference at the CBS Studio Center. New film, filming display introduced for the Film Commission. In June, they had the International Travel Show, the International Pow Wow exhibitor attendees. Over ninety participants, appointments above between organizations, which included the tour reps from China, UK, Germany, France, Japan, and several other countries. In twenty seventeen, IWP was held in Washington. And June eighth, there was, well, they met with Kevin McCarthy's folks. There's a new sign on Highway three ninety-five. And Mike gave a brief presentation on four different projects that they, that they were working on. RACBB is going to have a billboard for the first time in Mojave on Highway fourteenth, beginning September the first. And a quick regional Film Commission report for April, they had six productions. And May, a total of three. At the Inukurin Airport, there was one production. And total community spend for April and May twenty seventeen was two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. So that's it.
Okay, the next one is the Economic Development Committee.
Yes, we met and we discussed the ICSC and we gave a report on the companies that we had talked with and follow-up. And there was, there was one other thing. What, what was the other thing that we had on there? For the most part, it was just talking about ICSC, but I thought there was one more. Gary, do you remember, was there one more thing on the agenda besides ICSC? Or is that it? Okay. I think that was pretty much it.
Okay, other committees. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, other committees. Lauren, did you want to speak, please?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, I do have the notes from the Infrastructure Committee meeting.
Thank you.
I can brief you on, I gave a report on property tax-based assessment district findings. We were trying to look at any cities within the state of California that has any kind of property-based assessment, assessments for funding roadways, for funding replacement roadways, reconstruction or repaving of roadways. There were some public comments. Mr. Matthews asked about Triangle Drive. And Mr. Raitora had mentioned several items about McCarthy's call for projects. Appropriation of a three hundred thousand dollar rollover, Kern County Funds to, Kern County Funds, sewer line plan, SCE, LS one rates that the, that the residents should not be, or the pools should be paid for or owned by the lighting districts. We also had a change in the Infrastructure Committee meeting to four o'clock. We also had an item on the agenda for dust abatement, in which a letter is going to be prepared that will go along with the building permits. There was a report on the wastewater treatment plant. There's a teleconference that starts for August, or July or August. And we also discussed the Bowman Channel, developers along the Bowman Channel, issues of onsite detention. Excuse me, onsite detention and drainage. And we also discussed benefit assessment districts for drainage facilities.
Thank you, sir. Okay, other committees, boards or commissions. Keith, I understand you're going to speak about the GSA.
That's right. We have a GSA meeting tomorrow and I was asked to go over the agenda with the board. So they, it's a pretty simple agenda. The first thing on is they're, they're approving some new members to both the PAC, that's the Policy Advisory Committee, and the TAC, that's the Technical Advisory Committee. So they're filling up those committees to some extent. They're going to receive a report from the PAC on the PAC's first meeting that took place last month. There's going to be a discussion regarding grant funding applications. There's going to be a discussion of the plan of action that we've been developing to hit, and the milestones to hit to, to formulate the GSP. The, the board is set to approve a contract with Jim Markman of Richards, Watson and Gershon to provide special legal counsel as needed. This is the legal, special legal counsel you've heard some talk about. They're going to approve that contract. There are a number of items on for closed session. I can't comment on those in detail, but the, one of the, one of the items is to, to discuss hiring the Water Resources Manager. The next one is to discuss hiring, discuss the issue of having Jim Worth, the legal counsel for the Water District, be one of the general councils for the board in the same way that I am and Mr. Phil Hall is for the county. That discussion's going to take place. And then there's going to be a performance evaluation also of the general manager. So those are the items on. I don't know if there needs to be any further discussion on any of those or not at this time.
I think not then, since the board has spoken up. Okay, then other boards, commissions.
I have Kern Card tomorrow night.
Is there anything, because there's the two new committees, the Wastewater Committee, was there anything? Because we heard a little pieces of some comments of.
We haven't met since the last time it went back to bond council.
Okay.
For theirs. And the only other committee that I have is the East Inukurin, I'm sorry, Chief, Lauren. East Kern County Economic Development Committee. We had a, a meeting and there was a, some, a video, a video, a PowerPoint that was absolutely, I thought was very good. And I wanted to bring it back to you, but they hadn't got it back to me. And so I'm going to give you the points of the PowerPoint when they get back to us and I will report it next meeting. And that was our first attendance at the meeting that Gary is the cheer of. Okay, any other boards, meetings or commissions? Okay, City Managers Report.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have Lauren Colt. Can you come up and brief the council where we stand at with the senior center parking lot? As well as where we're at on the SCE polls?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, City Council, we're in pretty good shape on the CDBG projects. The first project was our ADA ramps. It was our first CDBG project that we had let out for contract. We've successfully completed the work with fifteen ramps through the older part of town. Our, our senior center project, we're at our hundred percent stage on our plans. We called our consultant today and found that the architect has been out. Or otherwise, we would have had the plans this week. But the plans by the architect, we anticipate getting those back next week. And those will be the hundred percent review set for the senior center. Upon receipt of those plans and the specifications, we'll then ship those off to, to the county for them to review and seek their authorization to, to, well, first of all, to get a contract to allow us to proceed with the construction. There'll be a, an agreement that'll come back to council. And then, of course, that goes back to their county council. And once we have a, an agreement and an authorization to proceed, we'll be out to bid with those, with those plans and specifications and bidding documents. As far as the parking lot, I had a conversation with Searls Valley, Barry Wallace. Barry informs me that they have awarded a contract for the water line replacement in the, in the parking lot. And he thought that the PO had already been issued. So they are moving quite rapidly and taking care of that water line problem for us. I had to ask our staff to begin the survey and preparation of the documents, or pulling the plans together to start our design on the parking lot reconstruction. So we're, we're off to a running start on that. And as far as the Southern California Edison Poles, I had issued a memo to Cindy Quinn, who's the project manager for the power pole relocation along South Downs. And I'd asked her for a updated invoice and agreement for the relocation of the poles, in which she did respond to say that, yes, she would be preparing that updated invoice and agreement. So that should be forthcoming. She did not indicate in her return MOA, memo schedule as to when that would occur. I will continue to, to ask her for maybe a schedule and when we might anticipate that. But we're, we're in pretty good shape there in terms of getting our request in and, and asking for that updated invoice and agreement. I believe that concludes my report on our CDBG projects. I guess there's one I'm forgetting there, but we're in pretty good shape.
Thank you, Mr. Colt. Then I have, Mr. Patton's going to come up and, and brief us on what's going on with the splash pad and the park updates, park enhancements.
Good evening, council. I'm going to, I'm actually going to start with the CDBG also, because I didn't get a chance to speak to this Acting City Manager this afternoon. But I had a conversation, a couple of weeks ago, let me back up a little bit, we had a conversation with Laura Ly, who's the head of the Planning Department for the county regarding the CDBG money that Lauren was just speaking about, that we're now using TAB funds to do the, pave the parking lot. So we have to figure out how we're going to use that, that CDBG money that's not going to be used for the parking lot now. She referred me to another gentleman by the name of James Golden, who I had a conversation with. Because we needed a couple of questions answered. We needed to know, number one, can we just move the money? Or do we have to start the process over again? Number two, how do we do the process? Number three, are there any penalties? So basically, what Mr. Golden explained to me today was, you can do all of the above. There's a very small penalty. You have to give, basically give back the money that you've already spent on that particular project, which is just a, a few thousand dollars out of the, the project that we would have to give back. We can move the money, but from, from what Mr. Golden was saying, it, it would create, it would create issues for your existing project. So if you're any, if you have any momentum going on any CDBG project, you should do nothing to interfere with that, because basically the process would start over again. Like on the, say if we added it to the design of the project Mr. Colt was just talking about, we'd have to, all of that design work we'd done, we'd have to stop and start over again. And it would delay the project for, we don't know how long. So their suggestion is to identify a new project, even if it's with the senior center, and create a new project. That can be discussed at a later date on however the council wants, you know, decides they want to spend that money. But the, the best path forward is to start a brand-new project, instead of trying to piggyback it on another project. And we can talk, you know, in more detail about that, that, whenever you like. So moving on to the Pearson and Upjohn Parks Projects. The contracts have been signed for those projects. They've been fully executed. The project is projected to start around September fourteenth, or September fourth, I'm sorry, and be completed by October sixteenth. That's ordering the material, all the demo, installation complete by October sixteenth. The Freedom Park Enhancement Plan, which is, of course, we know is the splash pad and also the outdoor movie theater. The splash pad, the equipment will be installed by, begin to install, installation by November second. That's after they've, they've, you know, finished the, the, the design and the permit process and, and a twelve-week process to get the, the equipment.
When date was set?
November second is the projected begin date. October ninth is the projected completion date for the installation.
No.
November ninth.
Uh, I'm sorry, October ninth is the, the begin date. November second would be the completion date.
So we'll have the splash pad just in time for Christmas.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm a little concerned. I, I saw some information online about a lawsuit in Tulsa for a death in a splash pad because of the recycled water, even though they chlorinated it, they had some bacteria, and a child died from it.
Well, there's a, there's a two-step process. There's, there's treated water, but there's also the, the. UV cleansing of the water too, that kills.
Apparently, they were only chlorinating it.
The old systems don't have the UV.
Correct.
And they've had this happen in several. The old systems only had the chlorination systems. And so they've now required any new systems have the UV because there was some bacteria that was getting through the chlorination. And kids, for whatever reason, liked to drink the water from the splash pad, and they got really sick. And it's happened several places. But with the UV, that eradicates this particular bacteria that's been the problem.
Yeah, it treats it with chemical and the UV.
That's the, that's the only, Tulsa, I think, was the only one that I saw that had a problem like that.
There's, there's the.
There was another one.
Well, I mean, as far as a death. Tulsa actually had a death or two.
The death, yeah.
I don't understand, I, I understand how you might drink water in a swimming pool, but in a splash pad?
It's like a, they like lean over the hole. It's crazy, because I've seen them do it when we were traveling. And they're like holding their mouth over the spray hole, drinking it. And I'm just like, I don't know why the parents are watching them do it. But they, apparently they're thirsty and think it's like a water fountain. I don't know. It's a kid.
Kid thing, yeah. Sorry, I just was curious about that.
So all three projects, the contracts have been executed. We have completion, tentative completion dates on those projects. The last project that's still kind of out there is the Kermit U Sports Complex. As you all know, we, as we mentioned earlier, the, the last time we went out to bid on that project, we were about a million dollars over. We currently have an individual working on that project that's going to give us some guidance on whether we can, we can make this project in its entirety work with the current budget. So he's looking at it for us. He's going to give us some guidance, make sure there's not things that are in the current plans that may be superfluous. And help guide us through that and give us a suggestion how to move forward. If he comes back and says, well, you, we're not going to be able to squeeze this all in. We'll go back and re-scope and, and modify the project to fit within the budget guidelines. And, and once we have a good idea of what we can do, we'll, we'll go back out to bid on the project.
Because when I reviewed the plans a little bit, there was a little bit more to it than, than what we had talked about in the city council meeting groups. There was some blacktop work in there. And we had talked about.
There's paving, yeah, there's, there's.
We never talked about the paving in, when we were talking about revamping this thing. In fact, I, I apologize to Lauren, because we tried to shove it on to Lauren to, to do this, to actually oversee this project, thinking it was, you know, simple little things. But it, it's a pretty. things, but it, it's a pretty complicated project. I understand why Lauren didn't feel comfortable about it.
Right.
And that we were out of line in, in doing that, so...
Sure, it's, like you said, there's a, there's several different components. There's the paving, there's lighting, there's irrigation, there's turf work, there's a lot of flat work, ADA compliance and, and, you know, all that stuff. It's a lot of...
Mr. Matthews insists we do the lighting.
The lighting will be, uh, friendly.
He doesn't hear.
Uh, that's pretty much, uh, where we are today on all these projects. I was gonna talk about the senior CDB chart project, but Lauren, Lauren covered it and, uh, that's all I got, unless you have any questions.
Great, thank you, Mr. Patton.
What, you want me to...
The indoor playground?
Oh, we just, that's not really a project, it's just an element we added, um, uh, we added basically an indoor playground, it's still hot outside. We're open, uh, three days, we have it open three days a week for about four hours, so parents can bring their small children into, to play and get out of the heat for a while from ten to two o'clock in the afternoon. And, uh, it, it's been pretty successful. We've been averaging about thirty, thirty kids a day, plus parents, so the, the, the facility's pretty, pretty filled up, which I, I was, I was surprised, but it's been really successful, so we'll continue. Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Patton.
Did I run Mr. Martin off?
Excuse me?
Did I run Mr. Martin off?
He left.
Did he go chase Mr. Morgan? That concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Future agenda items, does anybody wish to add any future agenda items?
Madam Mayor, I don't know if it's a, if it would go here or if it's just a comment. And, uh, maybe our acting, our city manager can help me. I've been approached in reference to, uh, on Charlie Boulevard, when you turn into the passing ID office, that there's been several potential accidents because there's a double yellow line. Does the city plan on doing anything in reference to citing anybody that turns into the passing ID, that's crossing the double line, or do we need to do a study? That, that we need to put it on the agenda to discuss it?
I don't think that's necessary. I could probably have Acting Captain McLaughlin look into that and report back to you personally.
Thank you, sir.
Where, where are you talking?
When you come out of the front gate of, of, uh, on the base, you get ready to turn into passing ID to get your badge. There's a double yellow line, there's a very small strip of, uh, road there that you don't have room to turn into because traffic behind you is, um, moving as well. And you're not supposed to cross a double yellow line. So, where would we go to?
You can make a left turn over the double yellow line.
So, is...
Go into a parking lot, yeah.
Is it legal to, to do that then, sir?
You can cross over to pull into a parking lot, yeah. So, I'll have the traffic go out there and we'll, I don't know what's going on.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other future agenda items?
I, I just wanna remind, uh, the mayor that we do have to continue our closed session after the meeting.
Right. Okay, uh, mayor and council comments?
I have none.
I got, I got one more.
Okay.
Acting chief, uh, I know you're probably aware of it, that, uh, there's been another accident on Bowman and Downs. Can we get an update as to the sign, the stop sign, or... Mr.?
That would be more appropriate, coming either from Mr. Spear or Mr. Colt.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Thomas, uh, we have a consultant that we've selected for that design for the intersection. Uh, we have a contract that we're gonna be presenting to you next council meeting for you to, uh, approve.
Right.
Uh, so, we should be underway with the, uh, design on the, uh, design for that, uh, intersection improvements, which includes the, uh, multiple stops. Uh, we would've had it for you tonight, but I was unable to get the, uh, consultant contract, uh, before our city attorney in time to be able to make this particular, uh, council meeting, but I'm assured we will have it for you the next council meeting.
Thank you, sir. Person that got an accident was my coworker's grandmother.
Now you, now you gotta go to answer.
I gotta answer. Thank you. That's it for me, Madam Mayor.
Any other, um, mayor or council comments?
I would like to ask a question, and I'm not sure how it happens, and I don't wanna belabor a point, but I would like to know how we can more fully address actions that are being taken in committee. And Keith, I'm going to include you on this because you sent us something. Let me share with you what I've been doing. I have been going to committee, me, virtually all the committee meetings. If I am not a participant, a member of that committee, I sit back and keep my mouth shut. And that is very difficult, however, I do do that. Now, one meeting not too long ago, uh, Mr. Maurer had to leave early. Because I was there, I filled in on that last part of the meeting so that there would've been sufficient people to have and we wouldn't have had to shut down the meeting. I would like to know, I understand your response to us was if I start the meeting and Mr. Maurer had come in, he would not have been able to participate, because then it would've been three of us participating. I mean, talk about it at the opposite end.
I'm not sure I understand what you mean by the opposite end.
We got, we got to, we got to a timeframe where I had to leave, so I left, so she stepped in.
It's the same, it's the same problem. Now, let me, yeah, let me just tell you that, um, this isn't clear-cut, so I wouldn't, you know, I'm giving you conservative advice on this, but, uh, the, the rule, the only thing that the Brown Act says exactly on this is that if you've got a third member of the city council, then they have to remain quiet through the whole meeting. And, and so, the concern is, you know, there's a concept in the Brown Act called the serial meeting. So, there's a concern that you've sort of effectively created a, and I'm assuming in your hypothetical that, or actually, I guess it's not a hypothetical...
It wasn't a hypothetical.
On your actual, that, uh, that there were three, at, at some point in time, there were three participating members of the city council in the meeting?
Well, no, there were two.
Or was there only ever two?
And I left and she stepped in, so there were two again. But altogether, there were three.
Yeah, there were three, if you added everybody together for the whole meeting. So, that's a problem, yeah, and you need to avoid that.
Okay, so, any meeting, then anybody who is not a member of the, of the committee may attend but may not speak? And even if it shuts down the meeting because you don't have a quorum, it's okay?
Right, in other words, if you start the meeting, you're the, you're the one, you're the person who has to conduct the meeting, you can't tap out, I guess, halfway through. You could have an alternate start, and, you know, if there's somebody missing.
Well, you can tap out and you're, like, if I'm committee chair and Lindsay's co-second chair, what, assistant, she can take over the meeting.
Oh, yeah, 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 I mean, you can't tap out to...
I can't, I can't go tap her so...
To some, to, to get another member of the city council who's not even part of the committee, right.
So long as you still have a quorum. Yeah.
And if you don't have a quorum...
The meeting would be over.
Then you're done.
Yes.
Okay, I understand. My apologies to everybody who questioned that, or if anybody did. I, uh, I assumed it was because, but again, I won't do that anymore, I'll just go and...
Well, and like I said, it's not a clearly stated provision, I, we're, but this is my best interpretation of the laws.
Okay. All right, well then, given that, I would like to find a way that people who are not on the committees can be aware more fully of what is happening in the committees. Uh, for instance, long-term items, how, how do we keep that going? Things that may have been discussed, and I don't, I'm not going off the splash pad to drive anybody crazy in the pool, but that was one item that had we known about, may have been different. How do we, how do we, those people that are not on the committees stay informed as fully as we can and should?
The, we're, we have minutes for each of those committee meetings, correct?
Does everybody get all those minutes?
I mean, that would ordinarily be the way that people would stay abreast if they aren't, if they aren't, that's the purpose of the minutes.
Besides that, we have the committee reports.
Every council member.
It probably varies by secretary. I can get some kind of a, across-the-board direction that every secretary send every set of minutes to every council meeting. That's not a problem, I can, I can talk to them.
That would, that would make it easier and less tempting for me to open my mind.
Okay.
Yeah, right now, the minutes are only going to the committee members.
Okay.
Or whoever asks to be on the distribution list.
Those are public records, and there's certainly no prohibition about those going to all of the city council.
But just if it's done as a matter of course.
And they're supposed to be placed on the city website under that committee as well. So, they are there, but, like I said, I can give that direction to the other secretaries to do that, that's not a problem.
That would be helpful. Please. Thank you. Okay, no, no other mayor or council comments? Okay, we're going to adjourn back to closed session. Thank you all.